Okay, I'll call this meeting the order. I'll trail. Please stand and join me in saying we pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business this evening will be the election of a board president. Pursuant to West Virginia School Law Code eighteen dash five dash one C entitled Organization of the Board, states that on the first Monday of July, of course, we couldn't meet on the first Monday since it was a holiday, it's a meeting this evening as I'm sure all the other boards across the state are doing so this evening. But on the first Monday of July, following each biennial primary election, each respective county board shall organize and shall elect a president from its own membership for a two-year term. County board shall report promptly to the state superintendent the name of the member elected as county board president. Now I'm going to open up the floor now for nominations for the president of the board for a two-year term.
I'd like to nominate Steve Priestley. He's a wonderful guy.
I'll second that nomination.
Okay, Mr. Wilkinson has nominated Mr. Priestley for president. Mr. Baker is second in nomination. Floor remains open for nominations. Are there any other nominations for board president? Hearing no further nominations for president, floor is now closed. Board members will now vote. Those in favor of Mr. Priestley serving as board president for two years signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Congratulations, Mr. Priestley, and your election board president. You did have a lot. It turned all back on you.
I've seen mine the whole time.
So what lasted?
Things get dark back. We're even nervous all day. But I want to thank everybody for your confidence and I'm sure we'll be continuing working together. Of course, hopefully feel best for our kids this week if I know as intended that we're going to keep it on. Okay, also as part of this biennial election and things that follow that we have to take more offices that must be approved by the board to write the next office of vice president. So this time I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the office of West County Board Vice President for two years. Floor is open for nominations.
Oh, he's nominated Frank Curry.
I'll second that.
The wonder.
These really don't require seconds, but they're...
Oh.
I guess I should explain that. You just, everyone may make a nomination. We had multiple ones that we would vote. If one got a majority, then I understand that.
I'm always up for learning.
Okay. Mr. Wilkinson is nominated, Mr. Curry to be the vice president. Any other nominations for the vice president? Hearing none, that will close the floor, close the basis of the vice president. All those in favor of Mr. Curry, say the aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so you have Mr. Curry. Great place for Mr. Curry.
Thank you. Thank you, God.
Okay. Now we'll go to the school board association delegate. You know, the neighbor, Dr. Callum, his office. We must, every board has someone who represents our board on that period. So the floor is now open for nominations for somebody to serve as a delegate for that body.
I'd nominate Rowdy Baker.
Mr. Baker. Mr. Baker has been nominated as a school board representative. I want to give...
My comment to that would be I appreciate the nomination, but with my personal and professional obligations outside of the board, I feel like that position would be better filled by someone that has more time to devote to the extra attention that needs to be given to attending meetings and things such as this. It's, as you all know, I run with my hair on fire, always getting everywhere I need to be with my, having my children as much as I have them, and if no one else is nominated, I'll do my best, but I think probably someone else with more time could serve better and have all the need.
Who's there now? Is there a board member named Mr. Curry? I don't think we have anyone.
We have somebody, I can't recall.
They didn't leave.
Because this, for the most part, most of the duties are around the conferences going, maybe in the meetings, depending on all those kind of things. It's not like there's a substitute actor.
Well, I'm yeah.
Okay. I think, to be really honest, I think you feel certain that you're not really mediating that much already, because you were in the conferences, right? But I think you represent this world.
It's about an hour before the meeting, just like each time.
Yeah, okay. Because the executive committee is, it's the evening before, and that's an entirely different body. This would just be everybody on the days of the conference. Don't nominate here, I'll be, you know, the county representative. Okay? That I can do. Okay. So Mr. Baker's been nominated. Mr. Baker has accepted the nomination, so his name is on the floor. Are there any further nominations for our school board representative delegate?
It was Mrs. Smith two years ago.
Hearing none, the floor will be closed now for the school board representative, our delegate from the school board. All those in favor, Rowdy Baker, being our representative, say the aye by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, the recent two representatives, you know, on the recent executive council, every county has a two representative to superintend and one board member that represents the county. So the floor is now, the representative to recently. I don't know, I have no preference. Mr. Curry is nominated, Steve Priestley. Any other nominations for the, obviously? Hearing none, the floor will close for nominations for our recent representative. All those in favor, Steve Priestley, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, our West Virginia University Extension Board Representative. Now this is a personal court of law. Others, this is a code, someone that should, represents our board on the extension service here at the county. So the floor is now open for representative, school, or extension board representative. Nomination list, I've nominated Mr. Wilkinson, Mr. Baker nominated Mr. Wilkinson, do they pose? Are there any other nominations for the West Virginia Board Extension Board nominated? Okay, hearing none, the floor, it was nomination for executive extension board representative, Mr. Wilkinson has been nominated. All those in favor of Mr. Wilkinson, say the aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
We've got, so we've done our first act here, we've got the bits are all mandated by code. And I think that's, on their, that are experienced in what they've been doing and hopefully they can represent us well. I'd rather, we have a, we have a school association on that, just will be very interested in that extension service and all those things. Come back and cheer, that's what I've got to do there. All right, let's go to our next item then, which is our organizational action item. There are two things we have to do here. One is the adoption of our two thousand sixteen seventeen school board calendar, our meeting calendar, for proper term, it's a tax period, as everybody did for the last page. I can't find it. At first I kept looking on the wrong side of mine, and I kind of left it in the wrong place. But as you see, it's kind of similar to one we've had for the last two years. We were meeting on the first third and last Tuesday, the month. There's a couple of times when that doesn't happen. And I've questioned this pal about that, we were working off the ground. And then I've been questioned by the board members about it, so particularly in June, the eighth of June, we was chosen on the Thursday rather than the sixth, but the sixth is an OSK day. And you never know what's going to happen with those. There's always the possibility that we have wonderful weather and that will remain an OS day, and we would have anybody in school working it. If not, we will still want our business on the sixth and we'll have on the ninety eighth. Of course, on the twenty second, that's because West Virginia Day falls on that Tuesday on the twentieth. And then we practice the last year, two years, with that including year, we've gone June the thirtieth to give the treasurer adequate time, that last day doesn't buy most things for the year. And with that, you see our, 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 as I see meetings in schedule, those have been jingling around a little bit there, but right, not always scheduled the same school first and last each year, so we've done that. You also notice on there, our evaluation superintendent, how that stayed, because we recall, we must set the goal superintendent before September the fifteenth each year, so we've got that on there. And then later in the year, as we've just recently concluded, we had a presentation by the superintendent of how we've seen we've met those goals, and then this, that we've been doing, we're evaluating the superintendent. So most of the other things on there are mandated by law, as far as the financial requirements. So that's on there. And then another thing that we must do, just designate our, the law firm or legal accident advisors we might have, we have to here, might add here, of course, we have Leslie Tyree, who's, of course, through RESA, we have a shared agreement with several other counties with this Tyree, that continues. She will do the majority of the, those type things. But at times we run into legal matters that are more involved, that may be involved in real estate or some particular things that maybe, and this Tyree is not, her expertise isn't as great as maybe those necessary. So that's one of the reasons that we must choose the law firm or the member that we use to do those things. So we have both rights to represent us in those things for different reasons. Each year, there's any codes that they continue to do. If I have any questions or comments about either one of those items? Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Okay, if not, then the motion on the organizational items. Is there a motion please? Fred makes a motion. Seconded by Rowdy. Explain the two items, and all yeses, put it on this two item.
Yes.
All right. Now, a few minutes of the June, June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen recommendation, we have an attachment there that was provided for us. Have a motion for that please. I'm moving. Rowdy makes a motion. Seconded by Larry. Is that an all yes to? Yes.
Okay. Mr. Wilson, I don't guess we have anybody signing on the organizational, okay, and we don't have anyone signed in, I guess it's not a couple of comments. So we go to the administrative section. Do they have a motion please to accept those items? Mr. Curry?
Seconded.
Look.
Okay, item A is a contract with Jill E. Ziegler to provide professional learning for Lincoln County High School teachers during the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. According to the terms of the contract, which is attached, and this is being funded through Title Two. Item B is a new job description and approval to post two energy monitor positions, which is positions we talked about the past two quarters. Those jobs descriptions are attached. If you have any questions, you can ask. Item C is a new job description and approval to post for a new position in county high school for public safety instructor, effective from the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year, which is attached. And the last item, approval to post new positions for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year, one Title One teacher at Nway Elementary, one Title One teacher at Duvall to K eight, and one special education teacher at Guy Valley Middle School. These are positions that I was mentioning, I was talking to the board last week.
As far as the variety of things that we're just...
The special education teachers leave Guy Valley, yes, because of increasing enrollment, especially students saying they're just causing an issue that Mr. Rag is going to come up with a schedule with work for all those students. So through discussions with Mr. Wilson, Dr. Lowe, we decided that we needed to post positions, it's all about the team to manage.
We've refreshed our memory, Mr. Thompson pays additional funding for the Title One teachers.
The funding, sir, is based on ranking of schools.
Yeah.
Duval and Nway both moved up in ranking, so they were afforded more dollars, and based on those dollars and based on what we were able to provide to those schools, we could add another teacher and still be able to provide all the services that we have in the past. So it's all, it all deals with how they fall into that ranking by the magic formula that the state provides to us through a, through a report that we get early in the fall.
Did any school lose services at the...
No, sir, we actually added, we were, we could have eliminated Hamlin, but they just picked up Title One last year, and I just felt that we, you know, we're stressed a little bit thin. LEA, we have less money to work with, but it's my philosophy and Mr. Vickers' philosophy, we need to put it in the school. We're moms. And so, you know, it's just going to require me to watch the budgets a lot closer, but we'll do that and, and support professional learning through Title Two and Title Six as best we can.
As well as serve, I have all the positions.
Everybody in Lincoln County High School.
Two new positions.
Yes, sir.
All right.
In the special education position at Guy Valley, if you remember, we cut a special education in West End, some of those students that need some special services moved on to Guy Valley. That was a part of the issue also. We did, we worked with, took the schedule, it's master schedule, trying to figure out a way that we could do without having additional positions, because there's no way we can get them in the five and six. There are five and six, but the need is a, for students, a choice.
Okay. Any questions from anybody on personnel?
The administrative items.
Okay, not been, then all yes on administrative items?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now we'll get a person out.
Fred, a motion please. I'm moving. Fred made a motion. Seconded by, seconded to, Mr. Lynn was on lockdown.
Item A, transfer of professional personnel. Item B, transfer of service personnel. Item C, retirements and resignations. There'll be a large posting going out tomorrow of, for, you know, we just met last Thursday, and I know you gave us permission to come with amended personnel agenda, but couldn't get ahold of anyone to correct any of it tonight, and we have lost another teacher, probably at the high school, Dustin Lambert. He went to, he's from Pocahontas County, and he applied to study as administrator and will get hired as a middle school principal.
I'm glad for him, but I'm sorry we're losing him.
But he's good.
Yeah.
He's good, and I hate to lose him, so. But we're going to have several postings going out tomorrow.
And how long does that posting go for, Bill?
We'll have it five days. So when we come back in nineteen, we will have...
Right, that's on there.
Yeah, we'll have large, Dustin will be on there, because he's not going officially resigned, because they don't have their board meeting until the eleventh, and...
How many make it? Depends on how quickly it is.
But we wouldn't act on that until the nineteenth. So we're getting hard to, we act right, he's, he's not working on it. So after he, for sure he's hired, which is probably...
Okay, so, but we'll get some candidates wherever that may...
My biggest concern is the high school, because the possibility we're going to have five special education positions.
Okay, and talk to the second thing.
Five special education.
Five. Five.
Not five positions, but five unfield positions.
Five unfield positions.
Mama speaks.
Mama. We had the two, last year we hired from Kentucky, you made it one a day, two days, and quit.
That's right. Yeah. That's what they do that. But our, along that same line, our alternative certification, application that we turned in, will be approved by the board, the state board on the fourteenth of July, and on the nineteenth we have a meeting, a RESA about it, which means that any people that have a degree can, can apply for these jobs, and they have to take the praxis, and then there's a set of classes that you go through, RESA is setting, and it'll cost them about three thousand dollars to finish that program to become a certified teacher. Then they'll have to take all the assessments that go along with it. So it's going to make it a little bit easier, and we're also working on another program called Teacher in Residence, where if someone has completed all their college except for their student teaching, we can hire them as a student, they can, as a student teacher, we only pay them sixty-five percent of their salary. And then once they're, they've finished their student teaching, then they'd be eligible. If they've worked out, then we can hire them right there.
So they don't have an obligation to stay with you?
No, they don't. But there aren't going to be many people, everybody's going to be looking for jobs, I think, except for special ed. So some other issues out there, we're dealing with trying to get these positions filled.
Okay. And I know she's given us two updates on her...
Yes, those are updated, yes.
Seniority lists?
Yes.
Service persons, if I should have those. Did anybody call you to have, have it handy when you didn't come yet? Check it out. You know, they was, always keeping that, it's not very far from the fact.
And we're going to put it on the webpage too, that way maybe more...
You have to explain things on the thread. Okay.
Well, we would change that one column, I think, will help.
Yeah. Yeah, that's one thing that just confused the people in the past for service personnel substitutes, the hire date, being a regular employee versus being on call out, there's those, they'll always go hand in hand, so people didn't really understand that often times. So we talked about this throughout last year, Bill came up with an idea of having two columns and show them both there, and they perfect sense to me, so.
It's one of them is a hire date for call out for some, and the other one is the hire date for seniority for when a real job comes.
Yeah.
It was confusing.
I like it better this way, I don't have to try to confuse it myself.
This alternative pathway, certification, becoming a teacher, is, I think, is going to be very beneficial. I know Mr. Lynn will work very hard on this. Was it every county in our recent joined in? Yes, it did. So we're dealing with personnel directors in the other counties as well as with Department of Education, RESA, to get that through, because the first time we ran successful. And had to go in and make some revisions that just recently approved by the state board.
It'll be approved, that's going to be at this board meeting.
And then we're having a meeting on the nineteenth of RESA, that afternoon after we did the...
Eight AM. There's a lot going on.
Yes. How many weeks now? Five weeks?
Six weeks, so it's a student's...
Okay. Any questions in there about personnel, additional comments? Not, and then all yeses on personnel, I'm treated here. All right, comments, consider, board members, take that. Fred?
You, you say you've already looked at the Ranger storage situation for me?
Yes. I talked to Mr. Gosman, he's still there, and he has a plan, if we can go in there. Tell me exactly, tell me what it was. I understand it's not my area, but you said you thought that they were finished, that they could do like a brand new one.
Where are they?
Seeing them in there, and it's a large building, speaking than I thought it was.
Yeah. That building they got up for Rowdy, the block building, water's getting out of the pipe, so they don't have any place to put a new building really. They contacted me about storage. They want to keep the old building, they put it off, get the water.
So Mr. Gosman has a plan, repair the water door. And the other buildings that was repaired, because I, the others we outdo, it's his way of, just him had those repaired. And every, you get a setback, so everybody, if you look at it again.
Anything else?
Football field is right. Last week, we received a one bid, we can get, right, five hundred thousand dollars, and I'm sure I heard you mention that boarding last week, that maybe the direction we need to move at this time is possibly look at. Just putting out a bid out there, I have some water that coming in, and put that field on grade, it's sowing the grass right now. I just wanted to, you know, talk about that, see maybe give some direction if that's what we would like to do, so we can get started. Let's follow you, you know.
Well, I don't see much to really talk about. I mean, the bid that we got, the half million dollar bid, it didn't break down by stages or by, yeah, by stages what the cost of the bid is, as far as bringing it to grade, drainage. So what, I mean, my only question would be, what does it cost us in terms of working through ZMM and whomever else we have to work through to put a bid out there? And what's the cost to us of doing that? Because without knowing what percentage of the half million dollars was allocated toward excavation and, you know, bringing it to grade, if we're going to get a four hundred thousand dollar bid to just level the field without drainage, sow the grass, then that's still twice, more than twice the money we have. Is there any way to find out from ZMM unofficially or from the contractor that put that bid, what amount they assigned to that?
All right, it's about to see what I can find.
I mean, I don't feel like we spun our wheels on this. I think we've done everything we can do to make that a useful facility, but it would seem to me as a layperson that the largest expense in doing what we had asked to be done would be the excavation of bringing it to grade. I can't imagine that the drainage would add that much money to the project, but then again...
Well, the drainage and the tracks, what, what the, level laws don't going to be that much.
Well, but from what you're asking though, is the level, not only the field, but also the track area? So all that grass?
Yeah, yeah. Level everything if we had in the plan, sir.
Okay. Just a, the track would just be, correct. I mean, just you're leveling a field, then they're going to mark off where the football field would be, I guess, and then the track people would line up or something around it to show this week, but nothing all average.
No, no, no.
And you wouldn't be using the football field curbs, rack curbs, the same time anyway.
Right, no, I'm just saying as far as what you had to do, if nothing else, and you may be right, we can try to, we can try to find out what the cost would be, if we were just out there and even if you never got to a level, I mean, barely level right now, if it just got smoothed out and sowed the grass, at least they could crack it.
Yeah, they could be useful, yeah.
But ideally would be better to have it in the right grade, that way at least you've got that behind you.
I agree.
But if you can't do that, you may be right, the cost there might be, so like you can't do that, so, you know, I'd like to see the police be able to do something there.
Yeah, and I don't know, the, the plan that we asked for before, did it include development of parking areas in the areas for all the concession, all that as well in terms of bringing in the grain drainage?
No, I don't believe so. I don't think that was anything to do with it.
The only thing is running that track.
Well...
Well, and the goalposts were on there.
And also fencing. Yeah, fencing.
And fencing, I don't know where those two things came from. I heard of, probably about thirty seven. So fencing and goalposts were in there too, but I don't see those being, that's just, I don't know. What kind of fencing?
The half million dollar bid, just blew my mind, as, as it did to mine to everybody sitting here. I can't imagine with that being as close to some form of grade as it is.
Right.
That a contractor, a reputable contractor couldn't do that for much less, much less than the five hundred thousand dollar bid that was submitted. But in finding, I thought I misheard you. Yeah, I just.
So I'll, I'll contact Mr. Ferguson personally, note that it's just out of question. It's certainly a con, in touch with that contractor. Let them know, and then we want to know what, what the next step would be in terms of getting a bid out there that would put that, you know, on grade and sowing the grass.
Well, I, I just don't think we have to go through again to put it on grade. We just want the specs, whatever you call it.
Yeah, we made, yeah, we have those.
We have, I have the specs and I have that in my possession.
I mean, so what expertise does it take to put that down on paper for some contractor to deal with a bid on?
That's all we need, right?
All we need.
We have all the. Things we do, we stick the field to it down in the ass.
But was it the specs on that football field going to be a crown?
Well, yes.
Crown just means.
The field is and everything.
I mean, crown just means roll the middle, right?
Yeah.
So drains on both sides now.
Yeah. I'm like Rowley, I'm like, I like the old.
No, I mean, shouldn't, crowning it in the center.
How much, how much are drainage, what they charge to put the drainage in the field?
It's separated down?
Yeah, they separated out the way it was. We don't know what they charge, they may charge it down low and put the goalposts up.
Don't laugh.
And the fence.
Yeah.
Fence would be expensive, if you think of the size of fence, the price of the metal, fence would be an expensive addition for the bid, but it wasn't anything we asked for, was it?
I mentioned to Jeff one time, I said, we need to get some of that orange.
Plastic.
Banner.
Whatever that stuff is, and put it in manners so people don't drive four wheelers out there. Somehow that got translated to them to put up some type of fence. I just want to get some stakes. Driving it down, put some fence up.
And that's what we were talking about.
Yeah.
That's overheard conversation.
Well, I did find, that's the way we're done, keep the bid away, I just make mine. We can have the land with fence.
So I'll, I'll contact Mr. Ferguson, I'll see if there was some specific information in terms of the breakdown, what that board was supposed to look like. And then I'll share that with you. I'll, I'll be there. I'll make sure.
On that game, we're contacting the contractor.
Well, we're not going to accept the bids for contact. I don't think there's any problem contacting the contractor directly and saying, hey, this is not what we had in mind. We are considering letting a bid just to have the field crowned and sowed, crowned level and sowed the grass. What kind of number do you think that would run?
The goalposts and fence.
No, we want a crown somewhat level and soak grass. Can you give us an idea of what kind of bid that would, you know, what kind of number you'd return if we asked for that?
Yeah, they're familiar with the field and everything, at least. Who thinks all the way you're.
No, no. But I mean, I, I still think i- if we can, if we can prepare the bid ourselves without occurring additional ZMM costs, you know, they've never been my favorite people in the world since I sat on the facilities planning committee years ago and they convinced everyone that a bond was the way to go. And this is how you set it up. And we screamed and screamed and said, no, it isn't, no, it isn't. Unfortunately, we were right, they were wrong, but they made a lot of money on that process. So anyway, never been a big ZMM fan personally, but I don't want to see them profit more from this, but we're clearly not getting from and through them what we're looking for. I mean, I, I would expect, and I'm not taking a cheap shot in saying this, ZMM knew what kind of money we had available to work with, correct?
Everybody did.
They, they knew that before we had the, the big fancy people that came in with the three to five million dollar project, yet they brought them in. They knew what kind of money we had to work with when they set up this bid for what we wanted. Tell us, guys, you're all, you're all way off base. There's no, for the money you had, you can't get done what you want. Here's what you might get done here. That's what we need help with, instead of letting us do things over and over, or doing things for us over and over, that are so far out of our budget that there's no likelihood in, in this century of those things happening. So if we can bid it out, let's just see. I mean.
That's right.
Yeah. There's something we can do. I don't want ZMM to make another five, seven, eight, ten thousand dollars on the process and let's get a four hundred thousand dollar bid back.
Do we still have a local contractor here that does, I would say? I would think they would be considered enough to give us a real good deal on that. Whether it be separated, separated.
Separate, yeah, for the bid. I mean, I.
Not knowing what the cost of the excavation is.
We have a lot of grass on there, but. About things I want to get started. Get started in August, we have, we need to crouch the grass on there by September.
That's why we just wanted to break down into phases, just get the field, without any, anything else that. Then the hydroseeds is all pretty expensive, you could always sow it some other way.
We saw a ridiculous price on hydroseeds all back, I don't remember when, but it was outrageous.
Yeah, I mean, if we couldn't afford that, we just need to have the basic thing, the, the, the field, and go from there. And then if we go, assess, assess funds that we can locate, how much of the hydroseeds, maybe we can adopt that we, we don't pass away this over grass and. Hope for the rain. Yeah, Brandon can sort it in his first pack.
Yeah.
Go out there, see if you can do.
Somebody else does.
Yeah. We have tractors over there, our Votech program, I'm sure we got a seeder over there somewhere.
No, you're right.
Once again, that, all these things add up, you know, and there's not like neglecting that, it's thousands of thousands. So Mr. Mickie, we just want to have the bones started.
See what I can find out.
All right, football field, what else you got?
That's all I have, football field and track.
Okay, nothing else, we will adjourn. Let's adjourn until July the nineteenth, 2016, at six o'clock here at board office. Got a question from whom? Mr. Baker. Mr. Curry. Oh, yes?
Yes.